So first, we'll go over some general information about our work. Then Karina will share some information about our transplant equity advocacy. We'll share a little bit about the bill that I just mentioned. And then I'll walk through what the process of providing testimony is, some messaging that you all can use as health care professionals, and then ways to take action and next steps.
I can share a little bit about who we are and what we do. We are presenting as NLP, New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, and we are a nonprofit civil rights organization based in New York City. And we have three, a couple of program areas that we do work in: environmental justice, disability justice, and health justice. And it's in our health justice, our HJ program, that we're presenting our work on transplant equity. So a lot of our work in health justice is really focused on immigrant access to healthcare. It's not limited to you, but it really focuses on that. And we offer a lot of direct services, like legal representation, advocacy, free health screenings. And it's really from the experiences of our clients that we learned that if you are a noncitizen in New York, you will face multiple levels of systemic barriers to accessing transplants. And in response to these trends, we launched a campaign last year to advocate for equitable access to transplants. And this work includes a lot of different pieces: direct representation, advocacy, legislative efforts like the city-level policy, trainings for dialysis centers and medical providers, and also research. And we also published a report last year that talks about these systemic barriers in detail. So everything in this workshop, you'll find in greater detail in the report. And that's for free online in both English and Spanish. So that's a little bit of background on what we do. And Pravina will share more on, more in depth on these specific systemic barriers.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I'm Keddie Naby-Seghi Adler. I'm one of the co-directors of the Health Justice Program at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. And I'm here to talk to you a bit about our campaign, which started, wow, I think we've been doing this for about a decade or more. Initially, our work was really focused on helping undocumented folks in our communities get access to health insurance through direct immigration representation. We found that many of our clients actually ended up being folks who are on dialysis and in need of transplants. Our campaign really evolved from client need and community perspectives. We found that after we had helped with the insurance portion, our clients who needed transplants were still facing extensive barriers to accessing kidney transplants, even just getting an appointment at local hospitals. And so our campaign really grew to address the needs of our clients and is really sort of community-based in its origins. And again, New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, we are sort of New York City-based, New York State-focused. And so a lot of what you'll hear is primarily applicable to New York. But we love hearing from people in other states and, you know, sort of how things work in other areas as well. So yes, you all heard a bit about our organization already. So I'll just skip through this slide. But we're really going to address this problem here, right? So the problem that we see sort of on a systemic level is that undocumented people can donate, but they can't receive organs. Nationally, this is probably outdated. Folks account for, undocumented people account for about 3% of all deceased organ donors, but less than 1% are recipients. In states where populations of immigrants are higher, those numbers actually can be higher. So this is a huge problem. It presents sort of a moral and ethical conundrum, you know, about our health system and our transplant system as well. And so we try to address this. So this is, when I started working in this space, what I imagined would happen, right? So what I thought ESRD meant and how our clients' life would proceed, right? Life plans, acute illness, hospitalization, you know, insurance. And then they would get their transplant at some point. But what we actually found was that for our clients, this loop never closed, right? The dialysis, the acute illness and dialysis never actually became a transplant. It really was caught in this dialysis and potential early death kind of loop, which was unfortunate. And we know that, and I'm sure you all know as medical providers, that the longer somebody is on dialysis, you know, sort of the likelier it is that they'll have other comorbidities. It's really not great for the body, and their life expectancy actually drops. And when we look at sort of populations of immigrants who are on dialysis, we do find that they tend to be younger and in better health. So it just sort of doesn't add up. And who are they, right? So this is sort of in New York numbers. Again, probably should be updated a little bit. But, you know, New York has the fourth-largest population of immigrants, undocumented immigrants in the country. And, you know, about half of them are uninsured. But we do have so many of them who have served as essential workers in, you know, are the folks who are caring for our children, delivering our food, growing our food, driving us around town. And so these are, as I said, these are members of our communities and folks that we really interact with every day. And so, you know, this is an important sort of community-based effort as well. Okay, so this is sort of interactive. But I really just sort of love to hear sort of from, from medical providers when they look at a profile of someone, right? This is somebody who's undocumented, ESRD, on dialysis, relatively young, relatively in good shape, would like a kidney transplant. Do we think this person can get a transplant and enjoy the current system?
No.
No. Yeah, no, right? And do you think you could, like, could anybody name some of the reasons why we might not be able to get this person a transplant?
So I mean, as you were mentioning in our experience too, it's like when they're undocumented and they're mainly just eligible for emergency Medicaid. Emergency Medicaid doesn't, covers their dialysis, but it doesn't necessarily cover transplant care and post-transplant care, which is more important.
Transplant and post-transplant care, right? So transplants are expensive, so is dialysis. Are there any other reasons besides the insurance that we think folks might not be eligible for transplants? Or are we thinking it's maybe just the insurance portion?
I mean, I think definitely like the socioeconomic side plays a really big role. So I know from research we've done on even our patient populations, there are so many patients that are missing appointments, and they're like, oh, they're not inherent. They can't, you know, be listed. They're not going to fall through when they're like, we couldn't find a babysitter. I didn't have transportation to get there. I don't have a PCP or to be able to get those labs to follow up. So a lot of it has to do with kind of the ties to being undocumented and having to kind of live under the radar for a lot of things.
Yeah, so noncompliance sort of is looked as like a, as a potential larger problem without sort of looking at the systemic problems that are sort of potentially causing the noncompliance, right? So because they're undocumented, they might have less access to jobs. And so showing up or like missing work might be a bigger problem. Food insecurity may be a problem. Childcare may be, you know, difficult to acquire. We all know in New York, that's a huge expense for many families. So yeah, so those are some of the barriers that we see, right? Those sort of psychosocial factors that people are looking into about clients, patients as well. Okay, so here's what I hear a lot, right? Like, can they get a transplant? The answer is no. And here's all the reasons why I hear. Insurance, right? They can't get insurance. They don't have a social security number. We don't have proof of legal status or permanent status. Like this, this idea of like a permanent status, right? What does that mean? Somebody tell me what a permanent status means. What does it mean to have permanent insurance, right? When we live under a system that essentially requires all of us to work to be able to have insurance coverage. What does that mean, right? Psychosocial, are we, are we sure that all of these psychosocial factors are free of bias? Are we really examining the systemic problems that are causing these issues? And then policy, right? Like, are there actual policies in place that prevent undocumented people from, you know, sort of obtaining organs or being listed? And so the answer to all of this is actually, yes, people who are undocumented are able, at least in the state of New York and in a lot of states where insurance is not a problem or there are ways to get into insurance coverage, should otherwise be eligible for transplant as long as they're medically cleared, right? So a social security number is not required for listing. Legal status, a proof of permanent status is not a requirement for listing. Again, the question about psychosocial, are we really sure that this is free of bias? Have we examined all of the underlying reasons why some of the issues might arise? And then we also know that there are policies in place at the sort of like federal level that say we cannot discriminate on the basis of someone's immigration status or transplant allocation or listing. And then this is a bit about sort of how we address the issues. We're not going to focus, you know, often I sort of do a whole presentation that's really just on this part. But for the time that we have, I'm going to sort of zoom through some of these, but also welcome sort of questions at the end and sort of contact after the presentation. So these are sort of like the ways that our campaign works. And this is generally how work at NLP is done, right? So we do the, the direct representation to help people qualify for health insurance. So that's sort of this pre-call portion here. We, we have worked very closely in partnerships with medical providers and in particular with SUNY Downstate, which is the only safety net transplant program, kidney transplant program in the city and the only one in Brooklyn to create safe pipelines for our clients to get their transplants. We provide education such as this, and then we do other systemic advocacy as well. I'll tell you a bit about sort of the context of New York, where we're talking about pre-call eligibility. Again, I'm not going to go into like a ton of detail, but essentially, pre-call in New York is a health insurance eligibility category. It is not an immigration status, and this is particular to New York. Other states do have pre-call regulations on the, on the books and are able to sort of do similar work. But this is, they don't transfer across states. And it is sort of based, it's sort of a, it exists at the intersection of immigration and state health laws. And there is sort of an element of explaining or understanding like the immigration portion. So the element of making someone pre-call or somebody qualifying as, as pre-call are that a federal immigration agency knows about the individual's presence, permits or acquiesces to the individual's presence, and the agency does not contemplate deportation. So one important thing that I want to say here is, right? They're not saying you're approved, you have legal status, you can stay here forever, here's your citizenship, here's your green card, right? There are elements to this that are sort of like fuzzy, right? And so our work is really to do the advocacy to say this person falls under these categories and get them the insurance and then move them forward. And of course, for New York, they must meet the residency and income requirements. And then really important thing to know here, it's a means-tested public benefit. We're not, nobody is scamming the system. Nobody is sort of getting around regulations. It is a thorough and well-thought-through process of eligibility by the state. And so here are some examples: pending applications, some applications that are granted, deferred action, people know is, is an application, is DACA. Otherwise known as DACA is a type of application that makes someone pre-call. There are other kinds of deferred actions that people can apply for. One of the ones that we do all the time is for people based on their individual medical circumstances. And so a lot of our clients who don't have options otherwise would, would apply under that. Even people who are released from detention, from immigration detention under order of supervisions or humanitarian parole, so they've been detained maybe in proceedings, could, could qualify. And then there are sort of fuzzy areas where we're making an argument that the federal government knows and is acquiescing to the person's, you know, continued residence in New York. So it doesn't require somebody to have like a, you know, sort of like hand-on-hand proof of their status. It is a fuzzier kind of art of fitting someone into this. And this is sort of a lot of what we do as well. And this is just a bit about the process, right? It can take a while. Our immigration representation would begin. The person's qualifying immigration process would happen. They would qualify for insurance. The eligibility determination usually takes about 45 days. Then they enroll in the insurance. And after that, they're referred for transplant. But all the while, this immigration process could keep going for years and years, right? And they would, they generally continue to remain sort of eligible for health insurance, often for the rest of their lives. Okay, this is sort of another, another about, another thing about it, the education that we, that we provide. And this is really geared towards our healthcare partners, sort of thinking about the administrative barriers that they might be seeing in their own practice and their own caring for, for their patients. When they're making determinations about somebody's eligibility to be referred for transplant, to be eligible to be listed for transplant, what are some of the things that they're asking or requiring of people that may be creating administrative barriers to accessing that care? And I think there's another. And then we also know that sort of there's bias baked into the system, right? Whether we like it or not, it just sort of exists. It's, you know, I happen to often have another slide where I talk about how the immigration system sort of requires health, healthcare to start making immigration determinations, unfortunately, when it shouldn't be the job of healthcare professionals to do that, right? But really just thinking about like, are we asking about immigration status? Are we requiring, inquiring, or assuming that the person is at risk of deportation because they lack a sort of lawful status? Are we requiring additional documentation that we're not requiring of other populations? Those might be some, or this idea that they're noncompliant, that the outcomes will be worse, that they might be immediately deported or leave the country. Like, these are all questions that I, that I have seen come up. And so we have to think about sort of what, what is baked in there and whether it's, it's truly evidence-based. And so this is the other part, sort of the systemic advocacy that we do. One of the, one of the work, one of the campaigns that we work on, that we've worked on for a long time with other partners in the community is the Coverage For All Campaign, which seeks to expand New York State Medicaid and essential plan to cover all New Yorkers regardless of immigration status. Of course, you'll hear about the Office of Transplant Equity, which is a local New York City law. And then we also have strategic partnerships with hospitals, city agencies, state agencies, and elected officials to advance our, you know, our work with our. You'll hear more about how you can help us, but here are just some ways that I like to shout out. We'd love to see medical providers in particular show up, right? Show up to rallies, show up to conferences, show up to testimony, really talk about your experience and use your status as sort of respected professionals to advocate for communities in need. Review your intake and referral process, sort of think through those biases and barriers. And if there's anything that we can do to help you, we're always happy to, to sort of think through that with you, be partners for that. Again, reviewing listing criteria and referral criteria, are we stopping? I can't tell you how many times I've seen clients' medical records who have been on dialysis for 10 years. And the only reason they weren't referred is because it says they're undocumented. And I think one of the things that I want to really encourage all of you to do is to really inform yourself of the local laws, the federal laws. There are lots of providers who are actually even, right? I'm going to shout myself out. And also Dr. Denu Shigavagatip from Mount Sinai, who will be having a paper published in the journal JAMA, I think, in August. August 1st, we should have this paper out that sort of talks about some of these, some of the work that providers can do to sort of educate themselves about the barriers and also the, the way to overcome them. And then, of course, educate your team, right? Here you are getting this education. Please feel free to share the resources with, with your networks as well. This is, just, I think this QR code should send you directly to our, our report from a year ago, I believe, from a year ago, which, which details some of the work that we do in as a case study. But we'll also send this out at the end of this presentation. So I will pause there and hand it back off to Esther and Luna and Noah.
So you guys have heard this a couple of times throughout the workshop now. But what exactly is Bill 343 or the Transplant Equity Bill? So this bill will help establish a transplant equity office within the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Some co-sponsors for the bill are Mercedes Narcisse, Shahana Hanif, Lynn Schulman, James Gennaro, Crystal Hudson, Farrah Lewis, and Tiffany Caban. And how we developed this bill is actually with the help of Mercedes Narcisse's office. We proposed establishing an Office of Transplant Equity. This was through the work Karina discussed before. We identified systemic barriers that can be addressed through education for medical staff, transparency on eligibility criteria from hospitals, and through providing resources to advocates and transplant coordinators that would help their patients navigate the system. And so, and so what exactly would the bill do? The three main focuses are care coordination, education, and transparency. So with care coordination, the office would be responsible for providing or partnering with organ transplant centers to provide organ transplant care coordination services to guide people seeking organ transplants through the organ transplant process. And in terms of education, the office would be required to distribute informational materials about transplant care and access to people seeking a transplant and to host outreach events for them. It would also offer informational materials and trainings to healthcare providers involved in transplant care. In terms of transparency, the office would be required to compile an annual report detailing its activities and recommending ways to improve access and medical care related to transplants in New York City. And so we first introduced this bill in the fall of 2023. Well, we drafted the bill then, and it was first reintroduced in November 2023. We're planning to reintroduce the bill in the fall of 2024. If you want to learn more about the bill, you can find a little more about it on the city council website. We'll send a link within our follow-up email. And if there's anything you want to see in this bill, whether you think something should be added or if you have a question about implementation or what these should look like in practice, definitely include that in your testimony. That's what the hearings are all for, and that's what this workshop for. And I'm going to, workshop is for, and I'm going to pass it to Esther now.
Yeah, thanks, Luna. So now I'm going to talk a little bit, a little bit about testifying and what that looks like. But also just note that this doesn't just apply to this bill number 343. I think testifying in general is just a great way to make your voice heard. And you can also apply this to issues beyond health equity. But very quickly, 101, what is testifying? When bills are proposed in New York City Council or whatever other governmental body that you're dealing with, community members can show their support or opposition to the bill through public testimony. And it's a really great way to make your voice heard and share your story directly to policymakers and other critical stakeholders in that process. And it fundamentally just allows policymakers to do their job, which is to listen to you as a constituent. So when it comes to testifying at city council, some general things to expect are just an opening of the hearing by the committee chair and then some opening comments by the bill author or sponsor, and then testimonies. And there are usually a few folks there who are testifying. It won't just be you. And you can also submit your written testimony if you can't make it in person and also sign a testifying person. For New York City Council, the website is council.nyc.gov/testify. And you can also submit a written testimony after 72 hours post-hearing. We will have examples of written testimonies and in-person testimony videos for you later on in the presentation, so don't worry. And testimonies are generally capped at a two-minute time limit for in-person testimony. So this is a video of Karina testifying at a hearing earlier this year. It was on the Committee of Health and Mental Health.
The city council's general support of our immigrant health initiative has allowed my team to continue to meet the most pressing needs of longtime immigrant communities and members of the recently arrived migrant groups. Your continued support as we seek reinstatement and enhancement in our funding will be crucial to meeting the ongoing needs of our client communities. We serve clients across the spectrum of identities and healthcare needs that include gender-affirming care for transgender and nonconforming asylum seekers, gender nonconforming asylum seekers, as well as transplant access for noncitizens. Our work has increased access to healthcare for hundreds of New Yorkers, thanks in large part to our collaboration with providers in the city public hospitals and SUNY Downstate Kidney Transplant Program. We've had the honor of helping to save the lives of a growing number of formerly uninsured individuals who would otherwise be shut up, shut out of the organ transplant process due to their immigration status. As you work to address the healthcare needs of our city, I ask that you continue to center the, to understanding the needs of the most vulnerable people in our, in our communities. Concrete actions along these lines would be to support the robust funding of the proposed Office of Transplant Equity that council members Narcisse, Hanif, Schulman, and Lewis have championed. Careful oversight of the proposed restructuring of SUNY Downstate, which would involve merging services with NH&amp;H sites, in particular ensuring that New Yorkers from across the city, city who largely rely on SUNY as the only safety net transplant program in the city continue to have access to kidney transplants. Investment in quality data collection systems to track access to specialty service, services that would only be available at the city's voluntary hospitals for H&amp;H patients and Medicaid recipients. Use of any tools available to our city to ensure that voluntary hospitals use hospital financial assistance programs to provide medically necessary specialty care to qualified patients. I thank you again for your continued support and look forward to continuing to collaborate. Thank you.
So that's an example of what an in-person, like, two-minute testimony looks like, just so you all have an idea. But the next portion of this workshop will be focused around messaging. So just learning how to leverage your experiences, insight, and perspective as a healthcare provider or a medical student to advocate for policies that'll increase health equity in New York City or your community. So the next few, the next couple of slides are just some questions to consider. Think of this as like a workshop. You can jot ideas down that these questions bring up. You can also just do some like general brainstorming. We'll have a section after I introduce these questions for you all to share out any thoughts that you might have. But I'll walk you through like these questions and then give you all a few minutes to sort of think on them and jot stuff down if you want. So when you think about providing a testimony or just sharing your story from your perspective as a healthcare provider, starting with your clinical background is a good place to start. So thinking about like, who are you? Why does this issue matter to you? And what is your involvement in the issue? Who are the communities that you serve? What are some challenges or barriers to, for example, transplant care that you've seen? And then thinking about the impacts that these barriers have had on your patients. So how have the lives of your patients changed since receiving this transplant? And if your patients haven't been able to receive a transplant, how are their lives impacted from not being able to receive that care? And then in connection to the specific bill number 343, what are some changes that you would like to see in transplant care? Whether it's something that applied to a specific scenario that you were involved in or like a larger systemic change, what are some things that you wish were different? And then connecting your specific experiences to policy changes. This bill number 343 is just one of many health justice bills that NLP advocates for, one of many that are existent in city council or the state legislature, even the federal government. So changes can really be made at any level, even at your own medical institution. So drawing from your experiences as a healthcare provider, what are some changes you'd like to see in the system? What can be different? And how can the changes you'd like to see translate to actual policies that you can advocate for? And also, I would encourage you to think through how your institutions can better support outcomes for undocumented people. Like I said before, these changes don't have to be through government or city council or whatever. It can also be through your institution, your team, your role as a healthcare provider. So you can also use this brainstorming to think about, think about these changes on a smaller scale. But essentially, you just want the written testimony to start with a strong one sentence and show about what you want the council to recognize and address, why they should listen to you. So introduce yourself, your qualifications, the organization you're affiliated with. And then kind of answer the question of why do you support the bill? And what are your core points of your story? And how do they connect to the policy that you're advocating for? And then why should city council pass the bill? And particularly for this bill number 343, how can transplant care and health equity in New York City be strengthened by the Office of Transplant Equity? And then closing, and I'll pass it off to Luna to briefly talk about some talking points for the bill.
Yeah, we're going to share out a more like thorough document with better talking points. But for here, we have 3% of all deceased donors are undocumented, while only 0.5% of recipients are undocumented. We talked about the cause of that with Karina's slides, and you'll see some more again in the talking points document. As we've mentioned before, the only permanent treatment for end-stage renal disease As we've mentioned before, the only permanent treatment for end-stage renal disease is the kidney transplant with dialysis. It's ineffective as a long-term solution and can bring up many other problems. An increase in kidney transplants for uninsured and undocumented patients can save New York State up to 10 million plus per year. We have a more thorough version of this and a chart again in the talking boards document. And yeah, you'll find more in the document that we'll send out at the end of this workshop.
Yeah, and just quickly going back to the process of submitting a testimony or sending up for one. The website is council.nyc.gov slash testify. And it'll let you choose the method of testifying, fill out your contact info. And upload your testimony if you're submitting your one. So it's a pretty straightforward website, very easy to know. So I'll pass it, pass it off to Noel to talk about some ways that you can take action.
Hi, yeah, so we really hoped for this workshop to be a way to engage and connect with medical providers that are really invested in this issue. So we wanted to offer other ways beyond just testifying for public agencies and for city council. One of them is just public speaking, that's really valuable. At NLP, we're holding, we often hold press conferences, our community partners also hold press events and rallies. And the voices of medical providers are always really valuable at these press conferences because we know that like policymakers really give a lot of weight to your voices. And your, your expertise as medical providers is also really valuable at these public events, whether they be press conferences or panels or workshops. And you know, in addition to inviting us to speak, inviting us to present these workshops, you offer these workshops for free. We also have these presentation materials to share and more resources. So if you ever want to hold a workshop yourself, like we definitely want to support you with that. We also want to highlight that we're really emphasizing medical providers in this workshop. But the voices of patients are also really important too. Something that we noticed in New York City at least is that there's a gap when it comes to support groups for patients in the transplant process. And I don't know if that's something you've experienced as well, Azante, but. In response to that, we're trying to build up a leadership and community support group at NLP. To just offer patients a way to connect with each other and to also build their ability to advocate for themselves. We encourage medical providers to send their patients to us if they think that's useful. But I know you're based in Connecticut, so if that's something that you see in your area. Or if you want to encourage your patients to connect with each other too, that's something that they might also find really helpful. Maybe Connecticut also, I'm also focusing this on you because I think you might be the only one left in this presentation. So this can really just be like an informal discussion going from here. But National Kidney Fund, which is co-sponsoring this workshop, also holds patient education working groups. And NLP is in the Greater New York Patient Education Working Group. So if that's something you're interested in, it's a really great space to also meet other folks who are really invested in this issue. And to talk, and it's a really great space to also talk about ways that we can improve like patient outreach and like tailoring our information materials in a way that actually makes sense. To the patients that we're serving. So there's a lot of different ways to be plugged in if you're interested in getting involved or staying in touch. Definitely fill out the form and the, that's linked on the slides. We'll be sending out updates there and other ways to get involved. And we also really want to be creative with this campaign. It's new, we want it to be responsive to community needs. So also just feel free to connect with us if there's anything that comes up and if you want to chat more. But we have the four-month slides and there's, we also have our contact info at the end of the slide deck. But these are just a couple of ways to take action and. You can go to the next slide and just take space for any other questions or thoughts that you might have.
Yeah, and so essentially just thank you so much for joining us. We'll keep your emails from the RSVP form and some materials that we'll send along are the slide deck, testimony template, the example testimony, Karina's. And the bill 343 talking points. And yeah, so here's some of our contact info, feel free to get in touch with us if you want any support with reviewing your testimony. Or if you have any questions on the bill or on the process of testifying. Again, thank you so much for joining us. We loved getting to know you and hearing all your questions.